It's 5:30, we're calling meeting 100. Please rise and uh, you said the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The movement seconded to approve the minutes, both regular meeting and a special meeting. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve. Say.
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First up, Mr. Brechner, aquatic nuisance species. Rich is with the North Coast Sports Fishing Caucus?
No, here today I'm with the A and S committee.
Okay. The floor is yours.
We met back last September, then again in October, and then COVID kinda really took over for the rest of winter. So I'm back here to discuss wash stations with you and a joint venture with Benson and Nelson County. I met with Nelson County earlier this month, and they are still discussing the option. So I'm coming back to you since to relive it and bring it back to the circus, to see if the county is still interested in a joint venture between Benson and Nelson, and wash stations located in, now these are cold water wash stations, not the hot water decontamination. Game and Fish has that unit at their location next to Camp Crafton. But in the original proposal that was given out, if you remember, the state would provide the unit, and they would provide up to 12,500 annually for staffing and things like that. But they would provide the equipment and materials to develop it, develop it at a location of your choice. And for Stump Lake in Nelson County, they're gonna be looking at a location down there toward Stump Lake. An ideal location here in Ramsey County would probably be just east of the rest area, in that open area, or past the old, what was it, camper, disposal unit spot? East of there where there's ample land available, and it's already in our state-owned right away. There's already electricity and water there, so it's just a matter of filling it in and setting up the facility. Or if Ramsey County is not interested in a joint venture with Benson and Nelson, would they be willing to take something on under oath?
So the state provided the equipment and the annual cost reimbursement, is that per station? Is there a limit of how many stations?
Yes, per sponsor.
So Ramsey, Benson, and Nelson, if they formed a joint, would they get one or would they get three?
They would get three.
Gotcha.
That would be the proposal. You can kinda write your own ticket, this is a little new ground for Game and Fish and the aquatic nuisance. I don't believe the 12,500 is adequate to even for seasonal help, to do what would be required, manning a location, having some individuals out there who would be there while boats, their watercraft pulled in there for a wash and inspection, because they would be trained by Game and Fish then on how to inspect a boat and so on.
Rich, what type of this 12,500 the state wants to throw in this project, is that for each station?
Yes.
And you're put to buy equipment?
No.
Or they're furnishing the equipment?
They furnish the equipment.
This is for the labor bill?
Right.
The cost, what I'm reading here, 100% of the cost of the station, up to $125.
Right. Per station?
Yep. Per location.
And how much, how long do they want this operational during the year?
It's a season, so I would say you're looking at the summer season. Probably start late May would be most optimal, and then run through October.
Did they decide that, does the state decide that, or does the vendor decide that?
No, I think your vendor's gonna have to decide that. You're the ones, or whomever takes it on will be the ones to find the staff, and of course that's gonna be...
We have to find the staff?
Yes, you do.
Or the vendor does.
Vendor does.
Yeah.
Whoever takes it off.
Whoever takes it off.
How much of the fishing license do the county get sent? We must get part of that then.
A part of what?
How much of the fishing licenses they sell in North Dakota?
I don't know that the county gets any, any part of that.
But I mean, we should get some then.
I don't see why.
You don't see why?
No.
Well then this conversation's no loss for us. We're not gonna fund this by ourselves.
That's what I said, I said I've thought this program is way underfunded.
Way underfunded.
Yes, that's why I thought a joint venture between three counties, you would have more power, more pull, and more opportunity to negotiate just exactly what's needed. You're on the busiest lake in the state.
By far.
You have by far the most out-of-state traffic. So the amount of dollars here that are being offered really are not gonna meet, meet the qualifications or the requirements to operate.
So question I have, this 12,500 that they wanna staff this, is this coming from the A and S funded?
Yes.
From the A and S fund? Is that fund taking the money from all the boats that are getting... Every boat that's licensed, there's a fee.
Yeah.
Is that part of that fee or is that on top of it?
Yes.
That's where this money's coming from?
That's where the money's coming from. Comes from the fees that out-of-stagers pay, $15 every year for their sticker, and the $5...
So if Game and Fish ever come up to you and actually give you a loan, what they're receiving?
Uh, they're receiving about a million and a half per biennium. But each of those wash stations that you're looking at are 125,000 apiece minimum.
And we have zero in the state.
Did they go to the legislature this session? Have they been to the legislature, is this last session or not? Is one that's ending?
Uh, not with this, this was done last year already.
Last session?
Yep. Yes. Last session.
So there's a pool of money built up, and that's where this money's coming from. And this is one of the proposals of, of A and S prevention within the state. I've been on that A and S committee for a dozen years or so. Very passionate about keeping A and S out of our lake. We have a very pristine world-class fishery that's free of A and S right now. I'm not 100% sold on this idea, Rich, though.
Okay.
You know, it, washing a boat before you get to a lake, I'd rather see them concentrate on waters that are already contaminated, and inspecting the boats that are coming from there, or somehow inspecting them before they get into our body water. Just a, you know, and having the wash stations staffed is a good thing, so you're not doing, you know, semis and any vehicle off the road that happens to pull in there, you know, because it is gonna be free, correct?
Correct.
Are we taking away money from the private wash facilities in our community?
No.
No?
No.
Yeah. Is there a better way, do you think, of providing A and S, a better way to spend this money than a wash station coming to Devil's Lake?
I think, I'm getting from what you're saying, Jeff, you'd rather see inspection stations versus a wash station?
I would rather see something, you know, either closer to the Minnesota border, where there could potentially be coming across, before they get, have an opportunity to get close to Devil's Lake. Because we're not the only body of water that, that could be infected, you know. The closer they get to Devil's Lake, the better chance that we're gonna have to infest our lake. Right now zebra mussel are limited to the Red River, Lake Ashtria Bula, the south part of the Cheyenne River, and Lake Lemoore. So, and that's been our primary concern, is keeping zebra mussel out here. At least for the past several years.
Right. Of course, we're bluffing ourselves if we don't think that there's another invasion coming here.
Right.
And we know it's gonna be, I mean, there are roughly 70 or 25 invasive species throughout the state of Minnesota. We have a handful here in North Dakota. So there are opportunities for more to be coming here. So this, this is not something that is designed solely for zebra mussels. This is a program designed for the long haul, 10, 20, 30 years. Because as we live and breathe, there's gonna be A and S invasive species coming to our area from the rest of America for continuing, forever. So getting a program started now is really essential, whether it's... On Lake Ashtria Bula, I think they have three locations already designed to be put in place and inspections there.
So isn't it gonna be mandatory? That's my thing, that I'm worried about this. I'm not saying that we don't need, I believe that we need something to it. But if the state's not gonna make it mandatory that you get checked, how is, how is this gonna affect? Are you just gonna have the local people doing it? Is it gonna be mandatory that when you come in from the state, that you have to go get checked? Just like us going to another state, I know when I fish in another state, they have stations, it's mandatory.
It is mandatory.
Well, I mean, that...
Unless it's mandatory, it's gonna be very, very hard to control.
That's, that's a good point too, because the people that, I mean, Minnesota lakes have all kinds of checking stations and washing stations, right?
Yes.
The kind of people who are gonna bypass those with aquatic nuisance species are likely not gonna pull over on Highway 2 to wash them up in North Dakota. And I mean, that's not me saying that there's nothing to be done. My point is, is you're likely already catching the people who care enough about this with the infrastructure that's in place. Now how do you make sure that the people who couldn't be bothered to care enough care?
Well, I agree, this is, this is not 100% solution now. But if you take a look at Minnesota, Minnesota's spending somewhere between $10 and $12 million. We have a million and a half. Montana is spending $10 million. Wyoming spends $10 million. We don't have agriculture involved here, we don't have State Water Commission, we don't have tourism, we don't have any other agency except Game and Fish. Game and Fish doesn't have $12 million. So why we're doing it this way, or why it's starting this way is because we established this fund, and this fund was designated to begin the process of protecting our resources as best one agency can do.
Well, I, you know, to clarify, Rich, Game and Fish is the only one putting money in. Those other entities have a seat at the table at the A and S committee, and they have a voice at that table. And they all understand the impacts that A and S will have on the entire state. And so, uh, they just haven't ponied up a lot of monetary resources.
Right. No, I'm not saying they don't recognize the problem, but they're not in the play of this process of decontamination or wash station, or inspection.
Do you have any idea of what a wash station would cost? Because water and disposal of that water will be a big, big impact for the O and M boss.
Yes.
Have any idea what a budget...
I do not, I think Ben and their group do have those numbers. I sit on the same committee you do, so I have the same information that you have.
Who's Ben?
Ben is the director or the head of the A and S division of Game and Fish.
He's with Game and Fish?
Yes.
I sat in on the, excuse me, sat in on the meeting when Game and Fish came last time. And I guess from my perspective, I'm not opposed to the concept. I think, I'm, I think everybody appears on the same page that we need to do something. My main concern is that if Game and Fish is serious about this, why are they coming to us and asking us where should we put stuff?
They're not, I'm coming...
I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. Why aren't they coming up with a consolidated plan that's, that we're gonna put a station here, 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 and here? We're gonna back it with money, and then we're gonna ask the locals to come in and partner with us. Instead of just saying haphazardly, we think we should do this. And I understand where you're just coming to us because you see the problem, and then it's not being solved. And I understand and I appreciate that you're bringing us that. And that's why I wanna continue the conversation from our county's perspective and say, we wanna do something, but we need more leadership from the top down from Game and Fish saying, we're gonna fund it, this is where we need them, this is how we're gonna do it, and then we can step up and say, well, put some cash in.
Right, it's something, it's gotta be mandatory.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, even if it's, even if it's not mandatory, I think anything's better than nothing. And that at least you're providing the option for people to say, you know what, maybe I should go wash before I drop in. But at the end of the day, you know, all we're gonna do is decide, well, we should, you know, we should put one here, we should put one here, I mean, we're gonna try our best. But I mean, if they're serious about it, they should step up and say, this is what we want, this is where we want them, this is what we need from you with a proposal, and we'd be able to come with it, say, okay, we're on.
Come with a plan.
Yeah. And sitting in that meeting last October, it sounded to me like they know there's a problem, they know they wanna solve the problem, they just don't know how to get there because they are, I wouldn't say, look, the word I'm looking for, concerned about asking for the money essentially. Is what it sounded like. And I'm okay with, with, you know, if we can, if we can get a handle on the thought that it costs X amount of dollars, and then they're gonna throw in the money, of at least starting someplace, and this is a start.
Right.
But I would like to see them with a more consolidated plan on this is how we think we should do it. You know, and that's where mine's kinda frustrated, because it shouldn't be you walking in telling us we need to do this, it should be Game and Fish walking through the door, coming in and saying, this is what we wanna do. That being said, I appreciate that you come in and talk to us about it, because you recognize it's something that needs to be fixed.
I have for many years.
Before something bad happens.
Yes.
So that's why I wanna keep, I'm, I'm willing to keep walking on it forward, trying to do something, because it's better than nothing.
Really, that's all I, I came here for, was...
I'm behind Adam, I'll help listen.
Right.
But we're gonna get a better plan with Game and Fish before we get in here. Because I know exactly what Nelson and Benson are gonna do, see what we're gonna do.
Right.
And then maybe we can get something done with it, maybe we have a better plan.
Well, and a handle on, you know, what's, what's it gonna cost us locally?
Right.
Because $12,500 isn't gonna cover it. By the time you start talking water costs, and the time you start talking staffing costs, and it's gonna cost more than that. And I think we're all willing, we understand that the lake is a resource that we have to protect. So putting some of our money in to protect it, to me is a no-brainer. But we have to have a viable idea of what it's gonna cost us before we can step up with it, but that's why we need to keep the conversation going.
And if we have to be a full-time producer?
Well, and I...
More than one?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to have a few part-time people basically and run it with the lake.
Day-to-day, yeah.
I do know what one of the biggest shortfalls that they're having at Game and Fish is finding temporary workers up in the Devil's Lake area for the summer, seasonal employees, to work just as boat inspectors. You know, whether they have them on certain ramps on certain days, and stations out of Devil's Lake or somewhere within the area that they can... That, and they're also, I think, looking at contracting watercraft inspectors that could be trained through Game and Fish, that could do some of this, because not every boat, I don't think, needs to be washed. But if you had a inspector, somebody that's trained to look, what to look for, and say, no, your boat needs to be washed, yours doesn't, you go ahead... Because Suzie, how many boats do you suppose we'd give in a good day of fishing?
Thousands.
Thousands. So you would need a lot of wash stations to wash all those boats. And then to multiply that by how many gallons of water each boat is gonna be using, what do you do with that wastewater?
Yeah.
You know, wastewater, I think, would be a real, create a real nightmare. But a lot of really good things to start thinking about. And I think Adam and Ed are right, you know, we wanna get behind this, but we need to see a better, you know, idea of it. And since we're in that beginning stages of our budgeting process, you know, if that's something we need to add into our budget for next year, or find some wiggle room in this year's budget, you know, but again, I think we need to see a better idea from what Game and Fish has to bring to the table. Certainly 12,500 a year for staffing and O and M, I think would go by pretty quick.
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's the first thing I told them, was, you know, not even close to what we need in a market where there's this much traffic.
Well, I mean, you hypothetically, you're gonna have to stay open basically sunup to sundown. So you're talking what, 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM until 10:00 at night at least? You're talking 18 hours a day in the summertime, and to get decent summer help, it's gonna be what, 12, 15 bucks an hour? It's gonna cost a lot to rent something.
Why haven't they went out to, like, I know I go to Fort Peck, and they have these wash stations. If it's mandatory that you go in there, and it's, it's only open 8 hours period, why hasn't our Game and Fish piggybacked off of something they have? That's what frustrates me, listening to, you know, to Game and Fish on this, why haven't we went to something like that?
Yeah, I do not know why they have, they're gonna tell you they don't have the dollars of staff to pull it off, but they have not, to my knowledge, gone to any other department in the state of North Dakota to partner up to do something like that, which is what's required.
And I'm saying to put something together so that it can be something like that. So if we have, what you're saying, have an idea of what's required.
Do you have nothing on garrisons, is that correct?
No, I have.
Okay.
Oh, they will have this summer.
What do they go there?
They're gonna put in...
Same line?
Yeah, they're gonna put in a program just like this, yes.
Yeah, I think where they're concentrating their decontamination, washing efforts is gonna be Lake Ashtria Bula, the Red River, the Cheyenne River, and Lake Lemoore. Washing those boats as they come out, educating those people before they, before they go into that lake and let them know that, hey, you're in a, you're putting your watercraft into a contaminated area.
No, I understand all that, but it's a cockerel, they're not doing anything?
They're gonna have one a garrison.
They've never had one.
No.
No.
They don't have any in the state until right now.
And I think that's where the concern is, we're so behind the eight ball on this thing, this should have been... You've been beating the drum for years, this should have been a conversation, they should have came to us 10, 15 years ago.
We're extremely lucky, you know, that they haven't been discovered in our water yet. And you knock on wood and say a prayer that they don't be discovered soon? Because once you, once you have them, there's no getting rid of them.
No.
They multiply quicker than you can imagine, and, you know, they become a real problem.
Yeah, Ashtria Bula's investigation today is roughly 63,000 zebra mussels per square meter.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's an incredible...
That sounds like a lot, even though I don't know what the load number would be, that sounds like an awful lot.
And that, that's an increase from where they discovered...
Three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
So you're unbelievably prolific once they have a lot.
They're, they're extremely prolific, and they, they create a lot of, a lot of problems.
A lot of, from health hazards, all the way down to, you know, your wildlife hazard, your pets are a hazard. And of course algae blooms because they clean up, the good algae, and what happens after that is the blue green. And now you're gonna have, you know, real health problems for pets and everything else, in people.
So certainly, you know, the education portion of, we, we need to continue that effort, you know. Suzie's got a great, some great marketing that they've been doing in Devil's Lake Tourism. Maybe we can pick her brain on how to better market our A and S prevention strategies.
Ben and them have joined partnership with Minnesota, and Montana, and South Dakota on a massive media campaign. And then it's gonna be carried to local media as well, and then also bound into your local print. So they, they're putting a large amount of dollars into their awareness and education. And then of course they came to us, and they say, you know, what would your, what would your county or what were your communities like to do? And I talked to Jeff and Suzie both when we had Ben on the line, and was looking at an education program where we designate a day at a car wash, where we teach people how to clean, drain, and dry their boats. Just an afternoon, but the only way that works is if we get media coverage, TV coverage. So we're on the 6 o'clock news and we're on the 10 o'clock news. Because if we're not there, no one's gonna know about it. So right now I have, I have a car washer in town who's willing to participate with us. I spoke to the Lake Region Anglers Association, I have some volunteers who signed up here last week. And I'm still sitting on the fence with not having a firm commitment from a TV station who'll say, yes, we're gonna be there that day. And of course I understand that they have, well, what if something comes up? And well, this is what the something that comes up when it comes to me, that this is extremely important. And if we don't have media coverage, then it's a waste of our time.
How do we get that media coverage, which is better?
Media coverage around here, statewide, it's been a little tough.
We used to have it just a few blocks away, it was 175 mile away.
And I, I had actually mentioned too, on that call, that, you know, if we couldn't get somebody to come over to Devil's Lake for that, maybe it would be better to do it on the Missouri River or something, where they have the TV stations right in town, and they could get multiple organizations there at the same time to cover all the different, different calls.
Well, Suzie, I'm wondering if we could work with you and your media team, Tanner, your video, and do a wash station demonstration? We could have the whole thing as a 30-minute deal, or we could cut it into smaller segments and edit it into, you know, and blast it all over social media. You know, that may get us better coverage, Rich, than the 6 o'clock news that they don't...
I agree, I think every form of communication we go out there with is, is, you know, essential.
Yeah.
Should be beneficial.
Yeah.
Amples.
Oh yeah, we have, we have already got the materials for handouts and items that bring it to people's attention. There's multiple, and they range from leaflets that cover canoes, to pontoons, to wake boats, to jet skis, to fishing boats, to pleasure. They have a separate piece of material designed for every, every form of watercraft available. So all that material is right at our fingertips already.
I think these wash stations, you should put them out of business, and have a business partner up with some of this. And I can think of a half a dozen here in the community that I think would be very interested in doing something like that. But it's gonna drive people to their business.
Now they're gonna have to drive off the road to go to find a business to do it. I think you're better off on a highway.
There are lots of businesses right on Highway 2 that would be...
I'm talking, I think you're talking like a car wash.
It doesn't matter, set a station up in one of these businesses, that sell baits, sell booths, they food. I can't believe we're going to help their business. I'm not saying them do the washing, you know, get it close to them. Let everybody know where it's at. They set it out the rest area.
It would take a lot less money to do it then.
Yeah, we might partner with somebody, ask them up, you know. For the county to take this on, it seems like our purse strings aren't that large.
No, I agree, but with the loss of this lake, there's... No, I agree, but does the loss of this lake, does it?
I agree with you. Have you talked to the city?
Uh, yeah.
At the end, at the end of the day, I think we're just going to have to have some type of idea of, you know, how much over and above that twelve thousand five hundred dollars, if we committed to it, would we be talking, you know?
Good plan.
Yeah, and then if, if we have an idea, at least then we can shoot it from someplace. Versus now it's hypothetically, we're all in favor of the concept in terms of doing something of what's it going to cost us, you know? I mean, I just ran, if we only, if it was only open June first to September thirtieth, which would be overseas in eight hours a day with one person watching it, that's already fifteen thousand bucks.
Right.
I mean, you're already above the twelve five just staffing it, not talking any water, not talking any, anything. The, the next question I would have anyways, you know, if, if it was in town versus out of town, once you, I, I don't know, I mean, I know enough of what is zebra mussels, but not enough. If you get rid of an invasive species and it gets into storm sewer system or something like that, I would assume that all those things would be washed out in a treatment plant or something like that. You know, if you set it in the city of Devil's Lake, or would it have to be detached from the sewer system?
It would have to be detached.
Yes, you're going to have to have your own drain field and everything put in as well.
Because it would survive in, in a storm sewer system by itself.
Yeah.
And what it lives on is moving water.
Well, there goes every chance to partner with a business unless they want to replace their.
Yeah, because you're, well, well, if you're tied, and that's what I'm asking. So if you're tied into the city sewer system, something system, and it goes out through them, if they're still going to make it through that system, then you're going to have to have a drain field and you almost have to set it in a place where you could put a large enough drain field to handle the vol- the volume of water it's going to take. If you're consistently washing boats all day long, I mean, that's a lot of, I don't know how much water it takes to push every boat further.
Or there would have to be some kind of chemical in it.
Or some type of chemical in the water that would kill it, yeah. And then there's just a lot of questions that still have to be answered.
Minnesota must have those answers, don't you think?
You would think, yeah.
Fargo, do they do it? Is there something out there?
But that, yeah, there's, there's nothing in the state. Then I'm, this is basically a pilot program to, to show the need. And I, I don't think any of us disagree there's a need. It's just a matter of how do we get there.
So I guess in short, we're all still on board. We want more information.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
In short, yeah.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you, Rich. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Rich.
Yep. You bet.
Suzie, Tanner, Devil's Lake Tourism. Come on up.
All right. Thanks for having me today. I talked with Jeff a while back since it's the first time I'm coming to you with an update on what exactly you, you wanted to hear from me. And so I'm basically just going to give you pretty much the same update that I gave the city last night. So I apologize, Eric, you get to hear me twice. But if there's something that you would rather hear from me in the future, please let me know if you have any questions while I'm giving you some updates, please let me know that as well. But as far as our twenty twenty goes, I should back up. In the packet that I gave you, there's a bunch of different marketing material that we use. First and foremost, there's the strategic plan. Our group got together back in twenty twenty and put together a three-year strategic plan. And then the annual report is the one with the girls on the front that we herself. But back in twenty twenty, our fiscal year runs from October through September. And our numbers were only down about forty-three hundred dollars on the city side of things. So all in all, with the, the hit of COVID and everything, we actually fared fairly well for the year in twenty twenty. We've collected now exactly twelve months of county tax collection, so it's actually a good time for me to be here. And as of the twelve months, we've collected seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars on the county side. So it's been a nice little boost of income for the visitors committee. As far as the strategic planning goes, just a couple of things to note for the three years of what we've been doing. We've made strides in the Devil's Lake branding through our videography and photography promotions that we pushed out. We're working really hard to create monthly creative stories for in, different things to do for families as well as the outdoors. We've expanded our visitor center and our gift shop to give people a place to go to, to purchase merchandise. We worked to create a golf course to expand some recreational rentals. We have a dock and landing that they're putting in the spring for voting. So you can go up and golf if you want, or you can go up and get a beverage and a pizza. And now you'll also be able to have the opportunity to rent kayaks and paddle boards, or paddle boats as well. And they'll hope to expand that into paddle boards and more in the future as, as it becomes more popular. We started collecting county taxes, which was on there. And one of our internal things that we were working on was to implement it, what's called a CRM system. So it's just being able to keep track of everything that we do internally. So we've got training on that. It was a great time to do that in twenty twenty. So we're, we're rolling on that. Back to the other book, which is the annual report for twenty twenty. A couple of things to note. I'm going to go through a few pages here. It pretty much stays the same every year with the changes that we've implemented. So page six is our twenty twenty budget overview for the year of what we started to do in twenty twenty. We had to, in March, pretty much put a halt on everything that we were doing and pulled any advertising that we could. A lot of contracts were still in place, so we had to fulfill those. But we pulled where we could just to see what we were going to, to remain and what we could end up spending and not take such a huge cut. We tried to remain positive. All of our events were canceled. We had two in twenty twenty. We had Shiver Fest in February. And then we had a golf tournament for the Chamber of Commerce, which actually had to be rescheduled because it was a thunderstorm. So we were able to, to do that. So we tried to think positively. And we implemented three drive-in movies for the community, which were an awesome hit. We did a virtual fishing contest instead of our normal chamber fishing contest. And then we held the Let It Glow Christmas event, which was driving around for all of the, the Christmas lights and you got to go down there. As far as our traveling goes and sports shows, everything was pretty much canceled. And we didn't hit pretty much any of them in twenty twenty. So that saved us some money, but we lost a little bit on, on the promotions for that.
Suzie?
Yeah.
Just because I can see you're on this page in this paper. Is this Little Rock, Arkansas?
Yes.
Weird.
It is weird. Yeah. But we are.
Number eight on the top fifteen places that search for Devil's Lake or visit devilslakeind.com, Little Rock, Arkansas.
We are tied with the economic development website at the moment, so I'm not sure if that has something to do with it or not. And I know we did have some Arkansas visitors here as well, so I don't know how that, that kind of played into that. Yeah, but yeah, it was, there's a few of them that are kind of interesting. We fared pretty well, like I said, for twenty twenty. Our businesses didn't take as big of a hit on a generality basis versus a lot of the other cities in the state. The Canadian border actually helped us versus hurting us. We got a lot of traffic here in from the Midwest and different areas because they would normally take a trip to Canada and they couldn't do that. So they chose Devil's Lake as their destination instead. And I can tell you out of Grand Island State Park, they had the highest camper count in the state in twenty twenty and they showed a twenty-four percent increase over two thousand and eighteen. And that's without having the Canadians there as well. So we were, we were pretty popular.
They added camps like this year, didn't they?
Nope. Nope, they didn't. They had added all their full service with their sewer sites a few years ago. Yep. And in fact, all of their group sites, they could only put one camp on. You couldn't rent them as group sites last year. They could only be single use only. So they saw, their weekends are usually full. And then they saw during the weekdays, it was full every day as well. So they had forty-seven states that they brought in to, for a time or two or two. As far as our marketing efforts went, we really geared the message in twenty twenty as when you're ready to travel again. Because we didn't really want to push people to come here. And then slowly, we implemented our safety travel measures, trying to get the word out to the travelers what to do and what to expect when we got here and how to keep everyone safe. And then now we're kind of back on fully with, with marketing the area. North Dakota Tourism came out with some really great in-state co-op opportunities that we were able to piggyback on, which was great for us. And we also hosted a couple of major travel bloggers last year as well that we got some recognition for. On page thirteen, I always like to pull some of our top social media posts just to see what, what geared well for the year. And this year seemed to be big fish. Those were kind of our biggest things that people wanted to see. We've really been pushing the visitor experience with the hashtag devilslakeind. So we always like to see what people are doing while they're here and what they're taking advantage of. So we like to push that up as well. Our website statistics are on page fifteen, which we were just kind of talking about. It is interesting to see, you know, our top fifteen cities that people are, are coming to our website. Chicago has been number one for the past couple of years. Two thousand and eighteen, it was number two. I gear that towards a lot of the, the winter fishing, but also North Dakota Tourism has been pushing a lot of marketing into that area. And so I think they're driving a lot of the traffic toward website as well. I know this coming year, they're going to be in the train station. They're going to have a train wrapped in Chicago. And then they're pushing a lot of marketing there as well. So that's interesting to me. And then it just kind of breaks it down. Desktop and mobile visits to our website is always something that we take a look at as well. It just goes to show that on the mobile, they're looking at us while they're already here. So we want to make sure that we're pushing out viable information for things to do while they're in the area. And the other thing to note is our website page views. We had an increase of forty-four percent from two thousand twenty versus two thousand and eighteen. We had over three hundred and fifty-seven thousand page views on our website. So we had a lot of people that were looking at us. I gear that towards the tourism, but I also gear that towards the chamber side of things because we really pushed all of the COVID information out to the, to the local residents and businesses. And so I gear a lot of that towards, towards that as well. We budgeted very conservatively for this coming year and that, that all starts on page eighteen. We didn't know with COVID where we were going to be. We didn't know where we were, where we were going to be with the county tax collections as well. And so we, we put together a very conservative budget. And then you'll see a line item, which I get teased for once in a while on the miscellaneous advertising, and we threw some money into there. And that was money that we were going to utilize as time went on. If we had the funding, we could utilize that just to see where we were at. Something fun that we were able to get into as one of those add-ons is the N C H C hockey pot. If you guys watch hockey at all, they hold all the games together in December in Omaha and all the, had all the teams in one place. So we got in on advertising for all of the games for U N D. And then we added for an additional thousand dollars, all the other games that were in Omaha. And then Midco turned around and added a ton of additional areas to the, to the viewing. So they got in on like Kansas and Colorado. They were in a lot of different markets. Our website hits in December versus the December before tripled. And what I found really interesting is I graphed out when all of the games were on TV. And when U N D played, we had a huge like spike when U N D was playing any of the games. But when any of the other teams were playing, our spikes tripled. So we were getting a lot more recognition. The U N D games were good, but we were getting a lot of people that were coming in and looking at us while the other games were being played. So we had a commercial and then we had what's called an element. So every time they took a period break, it was sponsored by Devil's Lake Tourism. And we told them to go to our website for updated fishing and ice information. So I think that's where those hits were coming in because they wanted to know a little bit more about Devil's Lake. And they were all sick of us by the time December was over. But it was a really good campaign for us. So it's something we wanted to come out. Our advertising breakdown is on nineteen. I'm not going to go through that. I'll bore you to pieces. If you have any questions on anything that we're doing, please let me know. As far as our traditional media goes, we always like to break the pie, so to say, and make sure we're in all of the different areas as far as radio, print, magazines, TV, that sort of thing. A couple of fun things that we're doing this year. We added a couple of different events and different things that we're doing. So we're partnering with Johnny Candle. He'll be putting on six Facebook Live seminars for us starting in May. So if you're interested in learning a little bit more, you can tune into those. And we're also partnering with Lake Region State College for a high school recruiting event. So we're going to target those high schoolers that love fishing. And we're going to get them in. They're going to get a tour of the campus, see what they can come to school here for. We're going to feed them. And then on Saturday, Saturday, they're going to do a virtual, so to say, fishing tournament out on the lake for scholarships and a few other things. So hopefully we'll, we'll continue that and we'll get more momentum as time goes on. I also broke down the areas of our marketing by month. So you can see what we're doing and when, and then all of our big travel events, which the majority of them were unfortunately canceled for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and then also our different events. So last but not least, I want to mention our Facebook stats. We were down a little bit as far as our daily impressions goes. That has to do with the political year. A lot of people take out of social media when it's a big political year because there's so much going on. So we're not really worried about that. We still had over two million in impressions throughout twenty twenty, so that's good. We are also gearing our marketing this year towards Google. So a couple of years ago, the C V Vs were able to basically take your town on Google. So I claimed Devil's Lake as our town for the C V V. And why that's important is there was only three towns in the state that were able to do that before they shut it off. And it's us, Dickinson and Fargo. So if you ever pull up Google and type in Devil's Lake, North Dakota, on the right-hand side is a thing called the Knowledge Panel. And that Knowledge Panel has the map of the, the area and just like the Wikipedia things about Devil's Lake. But there's also different things that can be posted in there, such as itineraries to the area, fishing reports, events, anything relating to Devil's Lake and the things to do here. I now have the ability to do that. The unfortunate thing about it is they only last seven or fourteen days. So you really got to be on top of your game posting that information out. And so we've been trying and calling it Tech Tuesday and going in every Tuesday and making sure we're at least populating that with a couple of things. So when you go somewhere like Minneapolis for a family vacation, you don't pull up Facebook to see what there is to do. You pull up Google, right, and type in where you're at and look for information. So we're trying to populate that a little bit more. And then today, something fun that I'm really excited about is we had a company called Sea Source that we are signing on with, and it's really creepy. But Sea Source is a company that tracks GPS data on your cell phone. So everybody travels with their cell phone. And it also tracks credit card spending. So we're going to purchase three years of historical data and we're going to implement that and get all the dashboards for that. So right now, you know, all the website stuff is really important to us, but that's all who's looking at us. This will give us actual some insight onto who's actually here spending money coming to our city. So it's just a, a piece of the pie. It's not everybody. They work with most of the, the credit card companies and what have you. And we can break it down by the hotels, the resorts. We can, you know, if we want to track, we can track White Horse Hill. We can track anything, downtown or the Sports Center. And where I think that's going to come in handy is we're being asked constantly on the economic impact of a lot of like the events and stuff that are coming into the area. And we can also break that down by days, weekends, quarters, that sort of thing. So we can kind of look historically on, on what is going to play for us. So I'm excited about that. Like I said, it's kind of creepy, but, but excited to get some of that data. So we signed on with that a little bit early so we can implement that and look at that data to start budgeting for next year. In a nutshell, really quick, because I didn't want to take too much time, that was our report for the year. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Really, really nice work, Suzie. Thank you and your staff and there's a lot of great information.
All the photography in that twenty twenty annual report was new photography that we were able to, to take this year. Something else that we're offering to our chamber members and our hotels, anybody that pays into the, to the tax. When we get to somewhere and they invite us in and we can take some photographs and what have you, we're also taking those photos and giving them to the businesses so they can use it. And then we're putting them on their Google pages as well. And so they get the recognition for those. They can, you know, great photography to showcase their businesses or attractions. We started that probably about six months ago. I'm still catching up a little bit on some of our back photos. But we're sitting at nine hundred and ninety-six thousand views just on our photos and that's making time. So.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of interesting when you dive. Kind of interesting when you dive into the analytics, some kind of data break that way.
Good job.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for Susie?
That's step one. You said the county tax collection for the full fiscal year was seventy-three thousand and something. I didn't catch the rest of it, but...
Nope, since I started collecting it.
Since you started collecting it?
Yeah.
But you said it's been a full twelve-month cycle now?
Yep.
Okay, so do you have a breakdown on that? Is that just the lodging tax? Is that lodging and restaurant taken together?
That would be combined.
Okay, do you have a breakdown on what each of them wants to something else?
I do. I don't have it with me, but I can email it to you right away in the morning.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious how much of it's coming from the lodging portion from people coming into the community and how much is, you know, because some of the restaurant taxes derive from people in the community. So I'm just kind of curious what the breakdown is.
Is it fifty-fifty?
No.
I would guess the lodging portion of it is probably...
Higher.
Higher, yeah.
Lodging is higher.
Just because we have so many more.
In the coming...
In the coming lodging versus restaurants. So I was assuming it would be quite higher.
That wasn't the full year, did it?
We, well, we've, so we started collecting in April for the county. And so I've collected twelve months of data, or twelve months of money, which is the seventy, roughly seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. But that's not in my fiscal year. And so it's...
But that's twelve months of full collection, what happened out of the county was seventy-three thousand, which is actually pretty close to where we thought we might be. I figured it might be fifty, sixty, so actually a little bit better.
Yeah, we're a little bit better than what I thought too. So you'll see, you know, our lodging tax breakdown and our restaurant tax breakdown, that is just city because that's what I've been collecting. So now moving forward, as we get maybe two years of fiscal year data, I'll start graphing that out so you can see that on the county side too of where we're at.
As you can see, that A N S would have a very significant impact on recreation, fishing. If you have any ideas, the, you know, your input would be greatly appreciated on how we can work together and prevent some of those nasty predators.
Definitely, I think we should do that.
That Google thing would be a good thing.
Yeah.
Be huge.
Yeah. I like the idea of getting Tanner into one of those wash stations and we can do a video on it. But I have to agree with you, the plan that's in place, and I don't know if there's any updates. I haven't seen anything, but they need to bring something better back to the table. The twelve thousand dollars won't even cover the cost of the water. And that's what we pay on our fish cleaning stations. So, yeah, so that's a little disheartening, but hopefully we've been...
I'm not blaming Richard either, I mean, but I think he's been trolling the wolves here, you know.
I do too.
You know, and you need the help somehow, but probably going to have a plan like that.
Well, I credit him. I mean, he's out here on his own. Because he recognizes it's a problem, but it's just, it's disheartening that Game and Fish doesn't come home with, and say, this is what we eat for meal. Yeah, and he's very dedicated. I give him balls to the tire for it. It's just like, boy, we need to get a really good plan of places we can step up and get it done.
That, I think, has been some of our biggest criticism locally and from Lake Secaucalia is from Game and Fish's commitment or drive towards this. You know, there's been a significant lack of it. You know, and where they get hit from is people in Devils Lake and people around Lake Secaucalia that see this as a potential problem that would be significantly impact our areas. It's kind of a, I don't want to say a blase type of attitude, but, you know, for lack of a better word, that's kind of what it is.
Well, I mean, I guess I didn't, maybe I missed it. Do you have total, an idea of total economic impact of out-of-state people coming to fish on our fishery?
I do, and I can send you the official numbers for that. They come from Game and Fish. Every like ten years, they pull together some data on that. And they've broken it down for me. And I can send that to you tomorrow as well because I know the number. I don't want to tell you the wrong number.
That's fine.
It's been a while since I looked at it. But, yeah, it's in millions.
It's very significant.
Yeah.
Well, that's my point is I'm guessing that a couple, three, four million dollars from the state to help fund these things to make sure we protect the resources is going to be a very minor percentage of the total economic impact to us as well as every other portion of the state that we're driving in. I mean, eating.
I'd like to see those numbers too, Susie.
Yep, I also need to tell everybody.
I mean, you give us a little bit of gusto to go after this and see, you guys got to step up.
I thought we brought that up to you last time, you know, and get some help from the legislators. Let's get some money from the state to help with this tourism. I just can't. I mean, can't why that one didn't get done or did get done or...
Well, I think there was a little bit more included in the Game and Fish's budget for that this year, but it wasn't significant to me. You know, a little bit what they're collecting on that A N S sticker. And then I think they added some additional funding for A N S, maybe on their own. That could have been above and beyond what that A N S sticker revenue would be, but it wasn't significant to me. You know, yeah.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
At least it didn't come to us in the form of an unfunded mandate. We don't have a mandate.
So it's pretty much isn't.
An unfunded mandate, I think, but not a mandate. I probably shouldn't give them any ideas.
But Susie, I don't think we have anything else for you tonight. But I really appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, you have. And like I said, if there was something different that you were looking for, just let me know. It's the first year of N D, so.
Generally, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Mr. Fieldson?
Okay, last, the last meeting we went over that year-end report. There was some questions about what the miscellaneous column was. Just curious if anybody else emailed the information about that?
Thank you.
It's good, thank you.
Okay, second, we got the last two summer maintenance contracts hammered by the Lake Township. So that's the end of those, but we need a motion for the chairman of the outback chair to sign on.
Say it.
A motion and second to approve, sign on the maintenance agreements of our last couple of townships. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries. Continue.
Game and Magwater, this year in the past, we paid for seventy-five percent of the costs on county roads. And the homeowners, adjacent homeowners have paid twenty-five percent. I'm just wondering if you want to do it that same way again this year? Yeah?
Yeah.
See if it'll be working, so.
What are we going to do on the other roads? What did we do last year?
That was the same last year, seventy-five, twenty-five.
Other than county roads?
Well, that was a sliding scale. And then last year it went to, we paid twenty-five and they paid seventy-five. And they didn't do any of it. Now this year it's supposed to be a hundred percent theirs.
Theirs? Does the county does it?
We wouldn't do it if they paid for it.
Right.
If they're willing, but the township hasn't been willing to pony up the money to do it.
This basically, we just tell the contractor. I mean, we don't, the county hasn't done it, but we hired them, but we get the contractor.
We got this one all by school grid F and then some on the Lakewood, is that right?
The Lakewood pays for all the road.
For a township.
Yeah.
So the only one is this one all by school grid F.
School grid F.
No, I mean, go over there.
Fourteen?
Yeah. That's all township now this year, hundred percent. We do one out by the electrician, Johnson, on the truck route. And we do some way up north for a couple of farmers up there to try to keep the dust down around their farms.
Fourteen to be on this set?
No. It's just for, I don't know, I don't know if it's supposed to take care of the mixture. Do you want a motion to reapprove that or are you...
You were having a fight last year.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we cut share seventy-five, twenty-five.
On the county road.
On county roads. Say it.
We have a motion and a second to do seventy-five, twenty-five for county roads for Magwire. Discussion?
You haven't heard nothing about fourteen?
Another thing on that, they've talked about, they looked in the pavement, they looked into closing it for locally, solely. We're looking at some other options and nothing definite, but they haven't talked about doing this yet.
Those two options are going to work, we all know that, right?
Yeah. Last I heard, the township was going to go to the city and see if they would help. I don't know where that happened. That was just a couple of days ago.
I'm just trying to avoid another controversy down the road. Just kind of throw it back at us and agree with us.
Kevin, in the past, do you know how, recall how much that was?
The total cost is about six thousand, sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred for the year per application?
That's the same thing. We do it once a year.
Just over once, yeah.
And they paid seventy-five percent of that, is that correct?
No, they didn't do it last year at all.
Did you put anything on?
No.
We covered seventy-five percent up until two years ago or three years ago. And then we went fifty-fifty and then last year we would have paid twenty-five.
Right.
And then they didn't do it because the homeowners didn't want to pick up the seventy-five percent. The township just will not spend the money. And I guess, and I understand where they're coming from because they don't want to open up the can or that they have to spend it for everybody. But it's their decision on how they want to structure it. I mean, if they wanted to say off road count off whatever, I mean, their township would, don't quote me personally, but I think they've got the most money on any township in their county. So why should, why should somebody in Hampton be subsidizing road west down when they've got the money to pay for it?
The biggest reason we were helping pay for it before is because Highway twenty was closed earlier during that bridge and that type of thing.
And I understand where you're coming from too, that we're going to hear about it.
You know, it is. It's a well-used road, right?
It is.
Yeah, and it's dusty and, you know, it's real dusty, it's unsafe, so.
Well...
Last thing, I wanted something out there to happen and...
Well, yeah, and on top of the fact though too, you know, we flipped, what, three miles of road for their mile?
Exactly.
But we took over the truck route.
Right.
So, I mean, they got a, they got a pretty small deal there too. And they still... And I understand if they won't spend the money, but that's their decision from the township perspective. Those homeowners, if they want to get it done, they need to go to that township, Game and March. They got to raise a little team.
The real problem I see is if we start doing township roads, that'll be the one...
That will be right back to where we started.
Yeah.
And there was a reason that we decided to go this way, at least because I recall.
Do you have a motion on the table? Any further discussion?
You want a dollar over there?
No. If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Okay, I need the worker cutting edges for summer maintenance. And they're going to cost nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That might not be on your guys' agendas, but... Nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for summer maintenance cutting edges.
Moved and approved. They moved and approved, or moved and seconded to approve the cutting edges, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
And just for information, that surveillance camera on the search rescue building that shines down onto the impound there is up now and working, so that's installed. The hydraulic analysis on Ramsey four that Brian talked about with the water commissioner last, at the last meeting, it does say that we have to leave those culverts in there. If we take that culvert out, then it no longer meets the design for requirements. So that's just, I don't know if you want to make a motion there or just leave that as the job that the, or the water board did for, or found out for us or...
Nice report, Paul. Thank you.
I just love the crude picture and elevation. That one is a disaster.
That's the one up there, on there?
Yeah, that's what the boss like. They love to smash shiners so they can do that.
You see that some debris, that they need to clean. Would they have debris out on that?
I have a saw, we have a saw covering up. But I did talk to Justin Rose and he said that he would clean that. And then I'll look out after he's done it, make sure it got done right.
Sure.
It was, yeah, it was put it at the bottom, you know, this straw was hard to take down. We've shot it tops, it's attractive.
It's, for the most part, really a strider, not a well, it's strider, but... So I don't think we need to take action on that unless you guys think it's necessary. But inform them more. I mean, the water board did what we asked them to do there, so.
Yeah.
And then also, I guess, Paul, that on Ramsey County four, we're replacing that bridge. Maybe you want to talk about that?
Oh, sure, it's, it's done, you feel, with the hydraulics on that. And this hasn't been verified yet. We haven't even gone to check it, but it looks like a quad, I'm not certain box or whatever. She won't have to have a bed for grilling it. Be helpful for the coverage, we don't know.
You don't need grailings or not?
No, I have the box, it's all that works.
Box, yeah. Yeah.
Cheaper building and stuff too, so.
Yeah.
Cause your, your hydraulics don't either. It's just things like we do.
Yeah.
And Kevin, I saw that email that you sent to Matt Lindsay today requesting those, with those stream crossing standards were completed just almost been twelve months.
Yep, three, twelve.
That they've been submitted to the state water commission for, what is it, three stream crossing standards?
There's six, but honestly, gosh, they only take two days to do that. Not, maybe longer, two days.
They're very long. Uh, so if you gotta go up there, yeah, you got to do an app case, but...
Paul, what's the approximate cost or charge to do those?
Uh, varies quite a bit. I mean, minutes or maybe around, I would say thirty-five hundred, seventy-five hundred would be in the range for what we, what we do up here.
So something that takes a week versus twelve months for free?
When they're on the same, if they're on the stream, we've already done two. We have the areas figured out.
Right.
That's half of that time.
Yeah.
Or if they're on the same stream, to get the bottom one, you have to have all the analysis done up on the other ones.
Yeah.
As far as the degree area.
I don't know if any changes will be made at the state water commission level with the change of, of how they're structuring that department after this legislative session. But it's certainly one of the things that needs to be corrected.
Right.
Yeah.
I can guarantee you, we're not the only ones that are striving to information.
I know Nelson County's been waiting well over a year for one over there on that, I think it's Nelson twenty-two, Salford Highway two. Yeah, it's, it's a long drawn-out process that shouldn't take as long.
Right.
And that old proverb, we'll say in that time's money, money's time, kind of thing, just drives a person crazy.
One other thing that's kind of weird about the way they do it too is they give you the pools, but they don't tell you what size culvert.
Right, so then we have to look at an engineering service to have a design for that that would meet the flows that they recommend.
Right, most of the time, I mean, for the culverts, mostly I usually just punch it out.
Right.
Some kind of mean, you know, a few minutes later.
So... Yeah, so...
Pressuring and something, it's kind of out of our control, but water board, or the state water board needs to work on it.
Yeah.
I'd like to see some more staff.
To me, that's what it sounds like, depending on how you, the demand for these requests, if they're seeing more and more of them all the time or... But I think a lot will get changed and decided within this interim session. I know they got a water study that's going to look at a lot of different ways on the, looking at various water legislation. And then the department itself being, having a director and, you know, I don't know if that's going to help or hinder, but time will, time will tell. But thank you.
I guess the last thing I, I had one of my employees quit or leave this position, so I'll be advertising the fill-in position, just to see where it... That's all I have?
Thanks, guys. And Kevin? Anybody have any questions for Kevin? If not, moving on to the next item on... If not, moving on to the next item on our agenda, Mr. Jager, agency management.
Hopefully, mine's nice and quick here for you guys. Um, the current AEDs in our building, as well as, uh, the county shop, as well as the memorial building, they've hit their term of, term of life, they, uh, no longer support the current models we have, and the current batteries are set to expire soon. So, um, I reached out to Sean over at, uh, the ambulance service, and I asked for his three, uh, top choices for AEDs, especially for the public side, and, uh, those are the three in front of you. Little, uh, heads up on a few of them, the Phillips, he highly recommended, and the physio control life packs, the R two. Um, those, he, he said, uh, he knows about, and they're actually in our community right now.
What's the lifespan on these?
They're about eight years, uh, the battery packs, depending.
Only all, all three of them?
Roughly, yes. Uh, the battery packs, on the other hand, are only good for about four, depending on the model. Uh, one of these is a three-year, and the rest are four.
So, what's the battery pack run in, uh, changing?
Roughly, um, the battery packs for an adult is about a hundred and eighty bucks, so I just figured two hundred, um, and an infant is right around a hundred, a hundred and a half.
How many do we have? Three, four?
We currently own six.
Six. One on each floor?
One on each floor, one in the memorial building, one at the Kevin shop. So. So, it's probably time to look at upgrading these, and as well, I've noticed that there's not first aid kits on every floor, or at the county shop, that, uh, covers the amount of employees, so, uh, there's also another little sheet in here for first aid. Something similar to this, I'm not saying this like identical model, um, I reached out and asked for, uh, uh, through ANSI, and I, basically, this is what they highly recommended, something really similar to this one. I don't know if it's in your guys' pack, I.
Yeah, we've got it.
Okay, wonderful.
How many do you have? Need six?
Um, yeah, well, I prefer six as well for that too. Those are the cheap parts.
You know, fun and dig it out again? I'll make a motion, we go ahead and run it quick. We need and six first aid kits.
We need a.
Just like all, low bid.
Yeah.
I mean, low price, I mean, well, so it's gonna be about sixteen thousand dollars after tax.
The ones they want.
You gotta go with the Phillips Heart Start company?
I was really looking at that one.
Yeah, correct.
I think we all know people that have been saved by them in the school system, I know that.
Yeah, actually, ours in the memorial building was, actually used ones too, so.
Uh, those Phillips Heart Start, those are all worth it, basically, yes, their quality, I've seen them.
We, we have a motion, did we have a second?
Second.
A second? Go ahead and purchase six AEDs along with six first aid kits. Um, you don't think there'd be any need or necessary to, to have a first aid kit in every office or department, or more of those since they're fairly reasonably priced?
That's, uh, I guess up to you guys, I mean, it would be beneficial, I, 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 I feel, um, something that's probably quicker for the department head or, or employees to get to, um.
Is there a smaller version?
There is smaller versions, I can look at smaller versions for either the all in the hall or smaller versions for in the office, either way.
Well, you heard, we wanted to just approve up to a certain dollar amount, like, use your chairman's motion to say that Chris would spend up to eighteen thousand dollars, that you cover everything you need, face time, live, practice, and math there.
Did really well.
That's fine. On the, the kits are only forty-four bucks, so I mean, whatever, whatever we need to make a department.
And those are the, the AEDs that voice activated, tell you.
Full automatic, too.
Full automatic.
Yep.
Keep it simple.
Yep.
Thanks this year.
Thanks, you ever have to use it.
Put the hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope to.
He yells you, he yells you to get your hands off before the shotgun.
We have a motion and a second to spend up to eighteen thousand on AEDs and first aid kits. Out of COVID, that was correct, Ed?
Yep.
Yeah. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy shopping.
But you've always let it do it.
Right.
Anything else, Chris?
Nope, that's to do it for it, no.
Okay. Thank you. Crystal? HR?
Yes, and if you guys also saw the email that Candy sent out?
Unfortunately, we did.
Okay.
Um, for, if you'd like, I, I can start things off. Crystal submitted her letter of resignation, um, and, uh, we hate to see her go, we'd like to, uh, encourage her in any way we can to, to stick around, but, um, unfortunately, uh, she's, uh, got another future endeavor in mind, and, uh, wish her well on her, her, uh, next endeavor. She did, I did ask her to create a job description, and, and, uh, like to rebuild that, I think, uh, I think we came into, to HR, you know, whether it was hesitant or kicking and screaming, uh, but I think Crystal has proved her value and the value of HR to the county in several different aspects, and really appreciate all the work that she has done, um, implementing our, and updating our employee handbook, our employee policies, um, guarding, safeguarding the county against what could be potential litigation. Um, always a good thing to keep the county and the employees, um, but, uh, Crystal, you have other confirmation for us today, or?
No, I just wanted to mainly tell you guys thank you for the opportunity to work here at the county, it was a great fit for my lifestyle and the first man over here, with the kids not being all in school, and now they're both in school full-time, and I just think this next opportunity was just a good fit for me, so. But, I did know on the, the job description, I told Jeff, I'm, I'm not saying I'll ill-will, I'll do whatever I need to do, finish up before I leave, and if you guys do want to fill the position, I can sure make out with that. Um, so whatever you guys decide on that piece.
I just wanna echo what Jeff said, where Candy owes you a debt of gratitude, although it's been a, a short while, you've certainly, uh, certainly made yourself valuable to this community, and will definitely miss you. Uh, I can only hope that we find someone half as talented, uh, so I really appreciate that, and I guess with a happy heart, I'll say out the promotion that we advertised.
Except resignation.
Oh. Do I enjoy the motion? I like motion.
At least that's what they have to, because she works for us. Did you say it?
We have the motion and a second to reluctantly accept the resignation, and advertise for replacement, uh, for Crystal, and, uh, Crystal, do you think that with the added responsibility that has been placed upon the counties for HR, for social service zones, and the three additional counties that we have with that, do you think that a halftime position is adequate? Or, you know, Ed and Adam both sit on the zone, zone board, um, I know that was an added, a lot of added responsibility that came with that, um, but that's one of the, as a host county for the zone, that's one of our responsibilities.
Crystal, could you give us, like, a percentage of how much time you worked with the zone?
With this one?
Social service.
You know, it was probably about, probably fifty percent of my.
Fifty percent?
Yeah.
Did they ever cover at half that wage?
Um, I think that was questionable going forward, how that was gonna come out of their indirect cost phase.
Really?
Yeah, because HR is an indirect, is an indirect cost, it's not a direct cost, so it's, it's covered by the indirect formula. So we only get a percentage back, but we were getting kickback from the other counties on that, remember on the whole, when you did the ball payment thing, but it still wasn't gonna be enough to cover our expenses, and it would be a lot of work we're throwing your way on, unfortunately, but. Yeah, I guess the question, yeah, I was, I was, I was the same thought process as Jeff in looking at it, I mean, is, is, in your opinion, knowing, I mean, you know the workflow more than anybody, is, is a halftime position enough anymore?
You know, I don't really think, I think it's better, they would have a better connection with employees, and just a better all-around connection if they were full-time. And I did receive a lot of phone calls on my Thursdays and Fridays off, cause I made myself available, but, so I think it probably would be beneficial, and not only that, but a part-time position like this isn't just gonna be a nineteen-hour job, hour a week job, and then, so, vacation, sick leave, you know, so who's gonna wanna do that, put in thirty hours and be here for a long period of time? Just some things to throw around for ideas, but, so, but I think, I think they could stay busy enough for like forty hours a week.
Crystal, part of your job was taking care of adults, so that made up for basically a full-time job.
It did, yeah. Something like I did add on the job description there, that HR should be involved, more heavily involved in the benefit side of things, just because goes along with HR and knowing all the regulations that go behind benefit administration. And when you start getting this number of employees on, on the payroll, and with your benefit system, you really wanna know it in and out, or else five, ten years down the road, you, something's gonna be missed, and you're gonna be in a bind of having to prove that, that benefit shouldn't have been offered. Or there's just different scenarios that you wanna make sure somebody really understands that benefit system.
We're at, what, a hundred and, with the zone, a hundred and ten employees, give or take?
I don't know.
What, nine, five? Well, I, I personally agree, that perfectly justifies having a full-time HR person, you know? I mean, I think that the, the value of HR has been shown to this commission in this county over and over and over and over again.
Well, I mean, I, I can just speak from, you know, going through what we went through this past year, between Chris and Crystal and Candy, it was just constant, how are we gonna handle this, how are we gonna handle this, how are we gonna handle this, and it was invaluable, so. Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't know how, you know, where are we gonna, but we can find the money to pay for it, if we have to pay for it, it's not a problem that way, it's just a matter of, you know, how do we wanna handle it?
Like I said, I'm willing to amend my motion to say that when we post the job, we do so as a full-time position. I mean, I, my personal opinion, I have to be full-time too, I'm looking at, or I'm looking at a hundred and fifty-something employees, we got three, three, three full-time people. I can't, I have to, I'm working for, is it a hundred and five by yourself, and trying to do it hard time? Yeah. And I realize it was out, it's, how many people are offered as a lot?
Well, the zone makes up what? Thirty-something, forty? Sixty.
Sixty. One, two.
Isn't that many enough?
Three, two.
Sixty-five extra?
Yeah.
We used to be, when we were just Benson Ramsey, or, excuse me, Towner Ramsey, and us, we were with seventy employees, but adding Benson and all that, we stuck like thirty-five, forty employees on the county, it's, it's a lot.
Because social services alone was only like twenty-eight.
Yeah.
If, if we're taking, if, there's so much fluctuation and people coming and going, that it's.
Yeah, we're constantly hiring, we're looking for candidates.
Well, I think, you know, if we hired a full-time director, and for whatever reason, the workload kept increasing, and if they could then bring us a proposal on what they would need to do to make sure that the office was large enough to handle the volume of workload, but in the meantime, I'd say a good start would be to have a full-time director.
Well, on, on top of the fact that you were given a few hours a week to district health as well, so, you know, I mean, it, it just stands to reason, it's gonna continue to be something.
So, do we want to put, uh, advertise it with salary negotiable to start with? So we can wrap up the meeting and continue going, and, uh, get the advertisement in the paper and, and online, and wherever we need to go, and, and Crystal's not leaving tonight, uh, after the meeting, she'll be around for, you know, hopefully, a, a little while yet, and, uh, can help us work through some of those advertisement details and, and things, and so we get it worked out correctly, so.
I, I guess in my opinion, I, I think it would be reasonable, uh, at, at the discretion of the chair, working with Crystal, uh, doing a quick look at the different counties around the state, as well as, you know, comparable employers, figure out what salary range is, and, and.
Good idea.
And go from there, you know, give us, give us a range, and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the association of counties, see what some similar counties are, are doing as well as cities and stuff like that, and come up with it.
We can pull that up.
I think that's reasonable.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Crystal, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, yeah. Don't be a stranger, stop by when you're.
Both.
Yeah, all in one motion.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Covering the pieces for you.
Efficient, we appreciate that.
Why, why use three motions when we could use it?
Yeah, great. So, new business, well, that concludes our old business, I do believe, correct? All right, new business, approved raffle permit.
Hold it, hold it, second.
That was fast.
Fastest second in my life.
No, I got it, Candy's got it right, Candy's got it right. Get it done.
Moved and seconded to approve.
I got a short answer.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, VA credit abatement.
Moved and sec.
Moved and seconded to approve the VA credit abatement, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, discussion on senior citizen fund, put their clinic. I think, uh, everybody received this little item in their packet, looks public health, from the insignia on top, kinda describes the termination from Towner County, the return of the funds that we have left available up there, and then for the application for the senior citizen, um, no levy match bonds for the state office of treasurer.
You think that's good?
Candy?
It is compliance with phone calls from the state with Kathy, with Kim.
Yeah, Kim, Kim, Kathy, state.
Um, and Senior Meals has hired two people, I think that was at their meeting, to, to do this, so I told her, I gave her the same dollar figure to work with as what Towner County had proposed last year in their budget, and to.
Yeah.
Put up a spreadsheet and see where the year takes it, and if they need more money to, to come to the board.
She was with it, right? Kathy was there?
Yeah, yeah.
We talked about it at the meeting last week. This looks good, so, thank you.
I just told them that if there was anything I needed to do to, because we, we couldn't move forward without this form being filled out, because they had to be filed under a five oh one C three group, so.
We need a motion, huh?
Yeah. Yeah.
Move through.
They moved and seconded to go ahead and
I'll be very happy.
Very appreciative, very appreciative, it's good service.
Yeah.
I told her I'd call her tomorrow, because I'll have a check ready for you.
So I'm, I'm double checking my understanding, that we're just, we're, Toner County's no longer handling it, so now we're just moving it to Senior Meals and Services with the same funding figure we had for budget. Just double check.
Just giving, giving them a base to start.
Yeah, and if, if the dollars come in higher, we can, we'll just support it.
And then I will just take that, that check, um, deposit and put it back into the senior, so we have a
I'm, I'm just glad that they're willing to step in and take it on, because that's why we had to go to Toner County previously, because we had problems with it. If somebody wanted to run it, so it's great that they wanna do it.
It's, it took a little bit, but we...
Yeah, that, that's fantastic, they wanna do it.
They were open the other day when I, they're happy.
It's a good service.
Lots of happy people, they said that.
A lot of people utilize that.
Yes.
So, uh, with that, no more discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Visitors and delegations, Terry, you've been sitting patiently, Terry Astabold is here, would you have anything to address the commission with, Terry?
Yes, uh, it's, have you people ever thought about making Ramsey County a Second Amendment county? Uh, second, how would I say this, a Second Amendment, uh, had figured out earlier how to say it, but I can't remember how I was gonna say it now.
Was it a Sa- Second Amendment sanctuary?
Sanctuary county.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have you ever thought about anything like that? I know the state didn't do anything with the state legislature this year, a lot of the other states and counties and towns are doing some things. I was just wondering if you people had ever thought of anything about it.
Did, did that bill at the legislature fail? Uh, they had one in there that...
They did, I didn't hear about that one then.
They, they, they had one in there that, uh, that if there was laws that, uh, or executive mandates, or what have you, that would infringe upon Second Amendment rights, that the state law enforcement would not be actively enforcing.
You know, I haven't heard if it's passed or failed.
Uh, they were debating it the other day, one of the day, one of the, the comments, and they're trying to amend it, um, because it would affect uh, state investigations on the drug task force situations, BCI, different things that would go along with some federal. So they had to do some amending to make sure that those type of activities would be able to continue. Um, and, a lot of, a lot of concern with, with, um, some of the things that were going on, uh, some of the things that, um, were mentioned was, you know, North Dakota's always been a very strong supporter of the Second Amendment, uh, it's within our own North Dakota constitution. So they didn't know if there would be any issues going forward, um, from the federal government, but it's always open for discussion, Terry. I know that, I think there's one county in the state, when I looked, I haven't seen their, their ordinance or their, but I thought it was Emmons County, down in the southeastern, and when I brought it up, um, to other counties commissioners across the state, they thought a lot of it was, um, very ceremonious, it didn't have a whole lot of teeth to it, um, you know, certainly we don't ever wanna infringe upon people's constitutional rights, um, within the county and, uh, but, thoughts? What, what else would you have that sanctuary type of county, state or, what do you get, Terry?
As far as legally wise, or?
Is, is it just for the protection of Second Amendment, um?
Just, just more or less to recognize that we do recognize our Second Amendment rights, you know, and not so much as we're gonna rise up in arms or anything like that, it's more or less to let people know that, hey, we are taking this serious, this is something that, you know, we think that is a constitutional right, you know, more so than anything.
Literally is a constitutional right, right, it's not a matter of thinking?
No, well, yes, definitely, but a lot of people think that it shouldn't be a constitutional right.
Well, then they have to amend the constitution?
Well, that's gonna take a lot more and there's...
But, but, but that's my point, you know, and so, again, and I'm not saying really anything, but I, but as far as us saying that, I mean, that's gonna do nothing, I mean, because, because the sheriff is not an organ of the county, he's an organ of the state, right?
He's an elected official.
So it's not like the county can pass something and tell the sheriff, you know, what to enforce or not to enforce. I just, I don't see any, I mean, I see, I see no reason to do it or not.
Do it, yeah.
You know, it's like, it doesn't, doesn't affect anything, although I do appreciate you being here and, and having, you know, that enough passion to sit through a really very long meeting, to bring it up.
I've sat through a lot of meetings.
But we, we've never discussed it at this level, I guess, is, is the simple answer, it's never been brought to us, or?
It's just one of those things that, there's, it's been kicked around a lot, a lot of people are talking about, I don't even know what it all confirms in some of these other counties and states that are doing it. Uh, I think Nebraska did something on it now, just recently. Whether it has any teeth to it or not, no. It is a constitutional right, there is some talk that they wanna do away with certain things, outlaw this, outlaw that. What is actually considered, well, assault rifle, assault guns, anything can be an assault weapon. I mean, you can use a hammer as an assault weapon, you can use a baseball bat, so just to say that, you know, this is an assault weapon is, you know, and it's so vague as certain things, that it's just, it's hard to distinguish one from another, you know.
I, I, I think, uh, be a very complicated issue, to say the least, um, but certainly appreciate you coming in, Terry, and, uh...
It's something to think about.
Yeah.
Just more reading on it.
I thought I had your suggestion, but I was thinking about it.
Yeah, no, no, I don't, I, I didn't expect you to do anything to tell you on it, I just wanted to bring it up, bring it up to your attention.
I think I'm meeting close to the Fourth of July would be appropriate.
I, I, you know, I, I, I think there's a week or maybe two left with that legislative session, there's still some things going on there that may be of interest, I'm not sure if anything's gonna get, get done or, or accomplished, but, um, let, let's see what, what they come up with, and, uh, yeah, but certainly appreciate you sitting through a very long, long meeting, Terry.
Well, I learned a few things, though.
Yeah. Anything else educational? Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Anybody else, visitors, announcements? Um, Ed, do you wanna bring up that study that Dennis is looking at, or Representative Johnson? Ed's been working with him on some studying the cost of, exorbitant cost of law enforcement centers in our regional area. And I think Representative Johnson's gonna try to get something in the interim as far as a study for regional jails, and the impact of incarceration costs, you know, um, to local taxing entities. Yeah, it's a, it's a big high-dollar item for Ramsey County and, and, uh, something that we need to take a look at, Representative Johnson's gonna try to get that resolution passed through the last rainy moments of the legislature and try to get a study and take a look at what those costs are and and whether or not mill levies can be increased as, as local property tax, or if there would be a, another state aspect to it that somehow, you know, with some sort of property tax relief on it.
So, I don't read legalese super well, but the way that that's worded is that, that they shall consider studying?
Right.
They're gonna get into the study.
I, I think they have to say that on the shall consider studying on all of those, because then, because when they put so many things into the studies and then legislative management, I believe, following the session, then makes a determination on how many studies they think they can handle, correct?
So what happens is, when you say shall consider, they basically put it in a big hopper, and then legislative management picks which ones they like best. That's the bottom line?
Yeah, there's, there's never really a guarantee if you throw it to a study, it's gonna get studied.
Correct.
But it's, it, this is a start, this is something we've been popping over for a few years now, it'd be nice to have, at least have a look at what the costs of the incarceration are, if there's any way to offset the help the property taxes are without facilities like ours. So I think it's, it's a good start, and it's, it's a good, a good call by you and Representative Johnson.
It's something that, you know, talked about with social service for years, you know, and that's what I came across with the cap on mobility, you know, charity, I don't know, you know, one time, we all know that Ramsey County had paid thirty-nine mil for social service. Mil's at that time were about forty dollars, thirty-one point six on the social services. When we got the state to take over social services, I think there were two and a half million we were paying in Ramsey County for social services, you had Rockwood, right?
Something like that, two point two, two point three.
So, I, this is...
Well, our jail bill this year is what, one point six?
Yeah.
We have budgeted, something of that nature, and, and our mills are worth sixty-four thousand, something like that, so, I mean, we're doggone here pushing thirty mills now, paying for incarceration, which is insane when the mill levy cap on the incarceration for prisoners is canned. So that tells you exactly where our issues are, I mean, obviously that's what general funds are supposed to be, but the whole thought process behind that mill levy cap is, well, this is what we anticipated, your cost of grants, that was set up way back when, but I mean, the, the cost of incarcerating is, is, is crazy, and we, we need to figure out how we can either lower it or get some additional help, because at the end of the day, the problem is, is if we don't put people in the jail, then the jail has a budget issue too, so.
There's always, there's federal prisoners, you're talking about.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a horrible issue with how do you fund it if you don't put people in, but at the same time, we don't want to put people in, so, we need to look at alternatives. And I think the state's started on that path with drug treatment questions and things like that, but I think we can do a whole heck of a lot more.
I don't think you have to worry about keeping her full.
No, I know, but that's, I know, but, I know, but the, I've talked to go to the meetings before, the, the problem is, is that it's, it's a catch-22 of, we wanna keep the jail full, but we don't want it to be for Ramsey County. Because then the place cash flows, and it doesn't cost our taxpayers. And it's a consistent battle of, we need to cash flow the facility, but we don't want it to be our money. Unfortunately, the last four or five years, it's been escalating where it's been a lot, lot more of our money. Which is just how it is, but it, it's, it's frustrating to continue to see that, when we know, I mean, we don't have a perfect percentage, but we know that a large portion of it is drug crimes, people on drugs, I mean, you know that, obviously.
Or trafficking drugs.
Or trafficking drugs, or, or somebody stealing something to pay for drugs, or whatever, I mean, it's, it's just a huge proportion of it, and, and we need to figure out how to stem it somehow. And I, I don't know what that is, somebody far greater than me probably has some good ideas, but it's tough.
The month of February, Ramsey County averaged forty-nine point nine prisoners a day.
Yeah.
Imagine, our responsibility.
So, that's seventy-five, what, what's what we're paying now, seventy-five bucks? So thirty-five and another, thirty-seven hundred and fifty dollars a day then?
A hundred grand, we're close to one, that's, that's not what we're supposed to use tax money for. And RAC to see, you know, for the legislature, we're supposed to use it for roads and, and things like that, not
For, for footgetters.
Forty, forty or fifty percent of this tax money going to take care of, you know, law enforcement.
So our incarceration rate in Ramsey County right now, not including long-term people that depend, is, is five out of a thousand?
Yeah, pretty close.
Then that's not including the people that are in the pen, we've got long-term pen too, a lot of long-term pen, not a lot, you know, recently.
That was the workload we put on the state's attorney's office and the jail.
Well, yeah, when, when people ask me where our budget dollars go, the easiest things are, well, we wanna pay for more roads if we can. But when you really sit down and look at our budget between state's attorney's office, sheriff, and the jail, it's probably fifty percent plus of our local mill levy goes to picking people up and putting them to jail and running them through and putting the bag out again, and then we pick them up again. It's just, it's, it's, it's a never-ending cycle, we have to do something to fix it.
I'm hopeful it isn't a study that we will, so.
I think so. Chris or Bo, do you have anything else for our burn ban? Everything's...
Not at this, not at this time, it's still dry, so, they want to keep it for all it is, let Bo do something better. Our, our deputies are actively enforcing, and reports are coming up to my desk, so we're processing them through.
The, the one question that I have is, on some, some of those days where we're in a high category, which our burn ban would be in place, it seems to be like a, a pretty decent day to burn, and is, do you feel that that's a right place to be?
I think where we have it set right now is probably the best for being safe for how dry the, the, it currently is out there.
Unfortunately, that drug monitor index continues to grow.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any idea on the numbers of?
Of violations?
Yeah.
I would say that we're into ten to twenty-five at this point.
So...
At least ten to twenty-five citations that are reported.
Yeah. So remind people that it's ndresponse slash burnban, is that what the, the website is?
Uh, ndresponse.gov and then under the tab of fire, I guess, I don't wanna misquote the actual.
Yeah, but that is updated every morning, I think it's around six forty-five that they update that, and, you know, they have the colors of the map. Low is green, moderate is blue, anything of different color than that, our burn ban is in place. Yeah, so, all right.
Better follow the emergency managers, Terry, because it would get smashed up every day.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so, all right, that's all I had, unless anybody has any other announcements?
I have one thing.
Yeah.
I'm going to the recording office, Bedmore, they put out, uh, last September, they started this recording in cap of computer systems, all the imaging is done, and, but the indexing will be years for doctors, and then she just wanted to say she's attending a conference in June, and that'll complete all.
Yeah.
Right?
Legislative wrap-up?
Legislative wrap-up, meet him?
In person or, or virtual?
Online, yeah.
Yep. And anybody interested, ILG is hosting a county budgeting one oh one, um, next Wednesday? Yeah, so, it, it, it's a good valuable hour, hour and a half of your time if you have the time. County picks up to thirty-five dollars, and meets county commission requirements for your budgeting, and the extracurricular activities.
You can also watch it later, too.
Yeah, and you can watch it later, yeah.
And the same with the legislative wrap-up, with you.
Yeah, so.
So if we wanna, if we wanna do the legislative wrap-up, wrap-up, do you have to sign us up then?
I, I can.
Or we could just go on like ILG and sign up?
Yeah, I can send you the link.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, 'cause I'll just sign up and maybe I'll watch it.
And you...
Download and watch it.
Well, you have to... Well, you have to, you have to notify Alicia Adolf to have it record, the recorded portion of it sent to you.
Okay, well, just have it like it, I can get a hold of them.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to birdshot?
Yeah, please. I can watch it when I, hopefully in the...
Yeah.
All right.
If we ever get started, whatever, arms up.
Starkweather property?
Starkweather property, good news, uh, the property that we, the house up there been sold to, to a private individual, and, uh, so that was a concern for both the city of Starkweather, Ramsey County, who the property came back to, had a dilapidated house on it that needed to be torn down, and now we no longer have to foot the bill for that, so, it's a good deal. So, wanna thank Candy and the Starkweather City Council for working on that with the private individual and everything is...
Long-term calls.
Yeah, lots of phone calls and, and got her taken care of, so, very much appreciated. So, one less thing to check out your box, Bo.
Yeah, one less heavy.
Yeah. Anything else, Candy? Commissioners?
I think I'm good.
Meeting adjourned.